Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of August 14, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman, here. Councilmember Clark, here. Councilmember Carter, here. Councilmember Castleberry, here. Councilmember Hickman, here. Councilmember Wilson, here. Councilmember Holman, here. Councilmember Scott, here. Mayor Miller, here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is approval of the City Council's special session minutes of June 12, City Council conference minutes of June 26, City Council's special session minutes of July 10, City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of July 24, all of 2018, and City Council's special session minutes of July 31. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number four is a proclamation proclaiming the month of August 2018 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt. Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. ...of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of August 2018 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in the city of Norman, whereas the city of Norman is focused on the quality of life and well-being of families, health, and sustainable development, and is actively promoting the health, quality of life, and well-being of its citizens; and whereas the city of Norman has made a commitment to inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community, and it is the policy of the city of Norman and all citizens of this community should be provided with an opportunity to reach their full potential as human beings without being inhibited by conditions relating to race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, national origin, age, place of birth, handicapped, or familial status; and whereas more than 2,500 babies are born in Norman in 2017, those mothers deserve the opportunity to support and support to nourish their children through whatever means they choose; and whereas the Norman City Council acknowledges the health and economic benefit of a mother's choice to breastfeed, which concludes that breastfeeding is an important contributor to infant health and provides a wide range of benefits for an infant's growth, immunity, and development; and whereas societal and workplace support are key factors to a mother's ability to breastfeed; and whereas the 2010 Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act amends the Fair Labor Standards Act to require employers to provide a place other than a bathroom that is shielded from view and free from intrusion from coworkers and the public which may be used by an employee to express breast milk; and whereas in 2004, the Oklahoma State Legislature passed House Bill 2012 stating mothers have the right to breastfeed anywhere they have a right to be; and whereas the Norman City Council declares that the achievement of optimal infant and child health, growth, and development requires protection and support for the practice of breastfeeding. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2018 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in the city of Norman and affirm the council's strong support of a mother's choice, be it in the home, public places, or the workplace, and the city's commitment to being an inclusive community for all mothers, including those that choose to breastfeed. Encourage businesses and other community-based organizations to recognize the importance of allowing women the choice, provide break time and appropriate spaces for employees to breastfeed or express breast milk, and promote their businesses as breastfeeding-friendly for both employees, customers, and Norman residents. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Erica Byrd and Erica Millar to come up. And I see there's a baby in the back to applaud.
Thank you.
Would you all like to say some words to the council?
I'm a little bit of a nervous public speaker, so I brought notes. I wanted to first take a moment to thank council for the recognition, and specifically Councilmember Bierman for drafting the proclamation, and also Councilmember Clark and Erica Millar from the Norman Chamber of Commerce, who've been working with me on an initiative to help provide recognition for breastfeeding-friendly businesses in our community. I'd also like to thank my family for the support, including my husband and my two beautiful daughters, who are with us tonight. To preface, although this proclamation addresses breastfeeding, there are lots of ways that families can choose to feed babies. The goal is that we have happy and healthy babies in our community, and that families have the ability to choose for themselves how to nutritionally provide for their babies. Part of having that choice includes the option to breastfeed, among other options. Thinking about the over 2,500 babies born in Norman last year, I'd like to read a recent statistic published by the CDC. The percentage of babies who start out breastfeeding increased from 73% among babies born in 2004 to 83% among babies born in 2014. Babies are also breastfeeding for longer. 55% of U.S. babies born in 2014 were being breastfed at six months, up from 42% in 2004. That's a potential for a lot of mothers who may be actively breastfeeding in our community. And this is just for a single year. This means that we can anticipate we have tens of thousands of mothers in our community today who have at some point breastfed. The impact of babies in our community is significant. Going back to that number of over 2,500 babies born in Norman last year, imagine how many families that represents in our community. I say families because babies don't just mean birth mothers. There are lots of ways that children can enter our lives, and lots of types of caregivers. That can include dads, grandparents, foster parents, adoptive parents, neighbors, friends, childcare providers, and many more. So for each of those 2,500 children, think about how many Norman citizens that represents with an interest in providing the best possible environment for those babies. Just as there are lots of types of caregivers, there are lots of type of mothers who choose to breastfeed, whether they work from home, work away from home, work on the home, or any other variation. And for all of those nursing mothers, regardless of the situation, it is not easy. What we as a community can do to help is by offering our support. One way we can do this is by making our businesses breastfeeding-friendly for both employees and customers and citizens, and to be welcoming to nursing mothers. In the new initiative I mentioned before, we will be looking to help identify and highlight businesses doing just that with signage and a registry. There are leaders like the University of Oklahoma already going above and beyond to support the choice to breastfeed with specifically purpose lactation rooms. But as part of the educational and advocacy movement with this initiative, we will help business owners understand dedicated spaces are not required in order to be breastfeeding-friendly. There are lots of small businesses in our community today who can make a space available that is normally used for other purposes, such as an office, a conference room, or even a closet. We will be looking to recognize businesses who offer breastfeeding employees and customers any non-bathroom space with a chair and a small table or counter which is private from view or being entered by another person while in use. By this time next year, when we're celebrating August Breastfeeding Awareness Month, we hope that we'll have storefronts with stickers and signage and a list of breastfeeding-friendly businesses and facilities.
It has been a pleasure to work with Councilmember Bierman, Councilmember Clark, and Erica. The other Erica, I should say. If the choice to breastfeed is made, then it is important for businesses to support and encourage that decision. The Norman Chamber of Commerce believes workplaces and employers have a crucial role in providing supportive workplace environments, appropriate facilities, strong management support, and relevant policies in order for women to feel adequately supported and encouraged to continue to breastfeed when returning to work. Personally, I benefited tremendously when returning from maternity leave in the spring of 2017. The chamber made sure I had curtains on my windows and fixed a broken lock on my office door. We have a designated room for nursing mothers, which happens to be my office, and we are proud to have partnered with TSET to create a wellness policy that directly addresses this important subject.
So on a final note, I want to acknowledge this is only one of many family-friendly initiatives by both the city and the community as a whole. It is so important that we invest in families because our community is built by families, and the children of our community are the future of our community.
Thank you, ladies, so much, and thank you for this initiative. It's going to be wonderful that we can advertise ourselves as a business-friendly place for mothers. So, thank you all so much. Councilmember Bierman has a comment.
So I just want to say, first of all, my baby was one of those 2,500 babies born in Norman last year. And if you've seen me kind of fumbling around behind here, pulling this up, I'm actually getting ready to pump right now. And one of the ways that we can support mothers who breastfeed is to make it easier for them to be out in public with their breastfed baby. And part of that is providing spaces for mothers to do so in a way that is comfortable for them and comfortable for their child. And so I'm really excited to work with both of the Ericas and Councilmember Clark to promote this initiative throughout the community. Norman is a family-friendly community, and we can be so much more visibly by encouraging businesses to provide these spaces and advertise these spaces to mothers. Breastfeeding is by far one of the most difficult parts of being a mother right now. It is time-consuming, it is difficult to do, it is anxiety-provoking, and it is something that we can make infinitely easier for the mothers in this community by policies like this. So, thank you all for initiating this. I'm happy to be a part of it, and I'm looking forward to coming back next year and recognizing this month, and recognizing all of the businesses that have stepped up to make Norman even more family-friendly than we are today.
Councilmember Clark.
I definitely second Councilmember Bierman's excitement for the upcoming year and the changes that we're going to make. Our work is just beginning. I know that TSET has already heard about what we're doing and is excited to get involved. I am not pumping now currently, but I did for a year. And every woman that I talk to that has, has some story about not finding adequate places to do this, no plugins, or being walked in on by a coworker. And Kate, Councilmember Bierman, is correct. It's very anxiety-ridden, but it can be very helpful for the relationship with your child as well as the health of your child. So I have been a very big proponent of creating an inclusive community, and that word "inclusive" encompasses so many different aspects of life in Norman. And I think being family-friendly is something that we should be highlighting and focusing on as well. So it has been an honor to be a part of this. And I want to give another shout-out to Erica Byrd and Erica Millar. This is what makes Norman great. We have residents that do the work and help us make us look good. So, thank you, ladies, for your work, and I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Item number five is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items 6 through 19 on the consent docket, with the exception of item 17, which is being withdrawn. Oh, sorry. That was... Let me start over again. Item number one, I need a motion to place items 6 through 19 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? That was unanimous. Item number six, ordinance upon first reading rezoning 421 East Acre Street from R3 Multifamily Dwelling District and C2 General Commercial District to a spud, simple planned unit development district. Item seven is an ordinance upon first reading closing part of a utility easement located in Lot 1, Block 1, Street Thomas Moore Church Edition. Item eight is an ordinance upon first reading amending all sections of the code to conform to the state regulations concerning the definitions of alcoholic beverages and intoxicating beverage and addressing the consumption of spirits in public place effective October 1, 2018. Item number nine is an ordinance upon first reading adopting and ratifying the assessment role for the University North Park Business Improvement District, establishing the time and the terms of the payment of assessments, fixing penalties to be charged for delinquent payment, listing tracks which the assessments are being adopted, ratified, and levied, directing the city clerk to prepare, sign, attest, and record with the Cleveland County Clerk a lien for any unpaid amount due and assessed against a tract or parcel of land. Item 10 is submission of the Public Arts Board annual report. Item 11 is city manager's change order. Item 12 is amendment number one to a contract with Sprint Spectrum Realty Company to complete structural modifications and install new and expanded telecommunications equipment on a monopole east-of-the-water treatment plan located at 3,000 East Robinson Street, and increase the monthly rate to $2,500 per month effective July 1, 2019. Item 13 is amendment number one to a contract with Flint Co., increasing the contract amount by $1,381,931 for a revised contract amount of $1,480,612 for construction management at risk services to provide construction of the Norman Forward Westwood Tennis Center indoor court facility project and budget appropriation from the Norman Forward fund balance. Item 14 is a contract with Dr. Beverly Fritzler, DBM, Rose Rock Veterinary Hospital and Pet Resort to provide veterinarian services for the Norman Animal Welfare Center. Item 15 is a contract with Spaway Clinic to provide off-site spay and neuter services for the Norman Animal Welfare Center. Item 16 is a contract with Stephen Lewis and the city of Norman, providing for the separation of employment and related severance pay. Item 17 is a resolution authorizing the chairman of the Norman Utilities Authority to submit a Bureau of the Reclamation Grant application for Water Smart Title 16 Water Reclamation and Reuse Project Grant application to the Bureau of Reclamation. Item 18 is a resolution declaring a recruitment project for costs associated with improvements to Rock Creek Road from 36th Avenue Northwest to Grand Vue Avenue. This item was previously postponed on June 12, and tonight's recommendation is to postpone until September 11, 2018. Item 19 is an ordinance. This item appears on council's agenda since it was previously postponed on July 10 to August 14. However, since that time, the applicant has withdrawn this rezoning request, amending the planned unit development established in an ordinance 0-0203-2 as amended by ordinance 00607-13 to allow development of up to 50 net acres north of Rock Creek Road for commercial uses, including approximately 150,000 square feet of entertainment restaurant uses for property generally located north of Robinson Street, south of Tecumseh Road, east of I-35, and west of Westheimer Airport. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from the council regarding any item? Councilmember Castleberry.
Just for clarification, on number 18, because my agenda doesn't have that last verbiage you have on there, this is being postponed and not pulled. Wouldn't we normally just pull it off the consent docket? Or why wasn't it not pulled off the consent docket? Because it was put on there because of the previous motion?
Because of the previous postponed.
Yes, motion. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Because it was supposed to be on tonight's docket. Councilmember Scott.
Just have a couple questions about item 17, the grant application. I'm wondering how much money we're asking for.
Good evening. My name's Ken Kaminski. I'm the Utilities Director. And this is an application for a grant from the Bureau of Reclamation. This goes to our pilot project for our IPR project, indirect potable reuse project. And so it's a grant for up to 25% of the project. So we have budgeted about $2.5 million for this project. It'll be about a two-year project. This is an application. It doesn't mean we get the grant. This is an application to the grant. And if we are awarded the grant, that comes back to the council for you to accept the money. And then we would have a better understanding of the cost of our project and the amount of the grant.
Follow-up question. I had some questions posed to me about why we are looking at using potable water. Are we running out of water? Are we trying to prevent running out of water? We buy our water from Oklahoma City as well. So just a brief sort of why.
Sure. Be happy to. Several years ago, the council and the community put together a strategic water supply plan. It took two years in the making. We had an ad hoc committee provided by the former mayor, put together a number of people from the community. We had people from the Sierra Club, and people from the Conservation Commission, and OU professors, and developers, and members of the city council to make sure we stayed within our bounds and to make sure the project moved forward. We had six public meetings. So we looked at all opportunities of a source of water for the next 50 years for Norman, for the city of Norman. So this is a long-term strategic water supply initiative. And after that two years, we came up with a portfolio of options to use. We're going to use the existing wells that we have. We're going to use the existing Thunderbird that we have. We're going to increase conservation on a short-term basis. We are buying water from Oklahoma City. Hopefully, the next piece of our puzzle of our portfolio essentially is to drill more wells. We initiated that. When they're online, we should be able to stop using water from Oklahoma City. But the long-term look is to use indirect potable reuse, which would take highly-treated effluent from a water reclamation facility and put it back into a Thunderbird for use again.
Any other questions? Councilmember Castleberry.
I guess this is for Judd. On item 13 on the Westwood Tennis Facility, could you remind me of what the overall budget for that was and how this relates?
Yes, sir. Judd Foster, Director of Parks and Recreation. Overall project, the original project budget was $1 million.
Right.
And since then, we built the two outdoor courts and did the design work for the indoor, and thought we were going to be a little bit short, but not quite this short. But to answer your question, is $1 million was the original budget.
But that was for the indoor facility, right? That didn't count the outdoor courts?
It was for the whole project.
Whole project?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously. Item 20 is a resolution declaring a recruitment project for the costs associated with improvements on 36th Avenue Northwest from Tecumseh Road to Indian Hills Road. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
And at this time, I will recognize Beth... Oh, no. I'm sorry. This is not Beth. This is Scott.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're going to have to put up with me for this one tonight. Thank you. I'm Scott Sturz, city engineer. And tonight, just wanted to take a few moments and discuss with you the declaration of the recruitment project, 36th Avenue Northwest project. This is a two-mile corridor starting at Tecumseh, going a little past Indian Hills Road. And it's part of our 2012 bond projects that we have been working on diligently. So just kind of as a little refresher, I know we talked about this just a couple weeks ago, but our recruitment ordinance is found in Chapter 16 of the city code. And basically, it says that all landowners are responsible for improvements to their abetting streets. So they're responsible for bringing them up to our current code. Typically, we're talking about the arterial streets, and many of them are still, you know, a two-lane road, and we want to take them to whatever the latest standard would be for that roadway. So using recruitment, we're able to focus on is an entire street improvement project. Those properties have already developed. They've already gone in. They've already dedicated the right-of-way that would be necessary, and they've either paid for the road widening on their half of the road, or they've put up deferral funding, which we can use if we do a city project, to help defray the cost of that in front of their property. But this is a way which we can come back, this kind of levels the playing field. It gives us a way that we can, a property owner that chooses to develop, once that road is complete, or while the road is being constructed, that they're paying their fair share in on the roadway project, so that all developers are being treated equitably. So our development plating, that occurs in Chapter 19 of our city code. And basically, this applies when you're going to a more intense use. So in this case, we're talking about generally going from an agricultural use, which is unplatted, to either a commercial or residential use, which at that point, you're looking to subdivide, and to improve it, you have to come in and do the plating process. So that's where you're going to plat your property. And you've all watched it and done it many times, if you file your preliminary plat, then come through to your final plat. And at that point, you dedicate that right-of-way necessary for the roadway improvements, and that's the point at which you would also be making those improvements. So this is the point where you'd either be doing the deferral or doing the roadway widening at that time. So that's when this applies. If you're going to be, if you're in a recruitment, that is when the fees are due. They're due at the time of the plating, so prior to the final plat being filed. One misconception is that the property can be sold without the plating process, but maintains its current use. And at that time, there's no payment due. So it's only on when you're changing the land use and increasing the land use. So the parcels that are identified for recruitment are typically those unplatted parcels in the corridor, again, because they have not yet dedicated the right-of-way or done the roadway improvements as the other developers along the roadway corridor have. So we discussed this at depth on the July 17, 2018 study session. And at that time, we did identify that this is one that we'd be bringing forward. So we're bringing it to you tonight for discussion, and hopefully for approval of the declaration of this recruitment district. In total, there are 15 parcels that are being included, because there are 15 unplatted parcels through this corridor. Again, at this point, we're just declaring, this is the possible list, and properties can come off that if they donate the right-of-way, and then they're relieved of being in the recruitment district. It's kind of hard to see on this map, but there's 15 parcels there. They're outlined in red, and you can see them. They start at Tecumseh Road, there on the left of your screen, go all the way up, past Indian Hills Road on the north, because again, we're going just past Indian Hills Road to complete the intersection improvements there at Indian Hills and 36th Avenue Northwest. Just to make it look a little bit clearer, we kind of took aerial photo off here, and you can see all those parcels and where they're located. You can see it pretty well throughout the entire corridor. This is the list of those property owners. It's included in your packet. So what comes next? So if we get this approved tonight, we'll have the declaration, and that list will be filed. That way, we'll know the list of who would be eligible to be included in the list. And then we'll complete the project. At completion of the project, we look at the total cost for the project, and if there's any applicable costs. In this case, because this is a bond project and we're using federal funding, we do not expect there to be any costs that would be attributed to the property owners. It would just be the cost of the actual right-of-way purchase. So that's all we would expect to be on there. That would come back to council in a final list with final costs, and that would be filed with the city and county clerks, so that those would be known at the time of closing on properties, and we'd know at the time of plating what those costs are. We do, however, so that's over a term of 20 years. So we do have the... So we do have the opportunity that we can go back for prorata obligation if we did have construction costs. That would be based on a square or linear foot of frontage of that property. But in this case, we don't, don't expect that to occur. And then the right-of-way costs, and there is an administrative fee that's applied to each parcel. And then we have an inflation factor, which is based off the engineering news reports. And that's accrued annually. And then for the first 15 years, you pay 100% of those costs. And then it reduces by 20% every year after that. Until at year 20, there's no more recruitment funding that's, that needs to be paid on that property. Staff recommends approval of R 181912. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Councilmember Castleberry?
I just want to clarify for the record, on the Ruby Grant project, the city is going to donate that right-of-way, correct? We're not going to charge ourselves and?
No, that, that is correct. And we've already worked with Parks and Rec. And you'll be seeing those two easements coming before you very soon. And those are being donated as, as well as there's some required down at the fire station. Fire Station Number Nine.
So all the city councils will be?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And so therefore, they will not be subject to recruitment because there was no right-of-way acquisition cost?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
So this project is, I mean, 36th Avenue, right now, there's currently several parts of it that have already been improved, I guess, by the, those particular property owners. So I know the whole street will be redone. It will just be building around those sections. So how does, I guess, their recruitment work, I guess, if they've already widened their side of the street and put in the curb and all that stuff? Or we're going to rip it up and redo it, I guess?
That's a really hard, it's, it's really hard to do either way. You hate to tear up something that's been completed. However, in many cases, because we are doing such radical changes to that, the whole corridor, typically, we can get a better end product that will last longer if we do it all at one time, which is what we are selecting to do through this corridor. Some of those sections have been down, have been down long enough that really, it wouldn't make sense to leave those and work with them. So we're choosing to do it that way. However, they've already paid their costs, so they would not be included in the recruitment because they have platted, they've paid the cost or paid deferral back to the city, and they've dedicated the right-of-way. So they would not be included in the recruitment list.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Castleberry?
Okay. It's really not on this, but I do want to point out that as part of this project, we're going to have new traffic stabilization at 36th and Indian Hills and Franklin?
At this point, it'll be at Indian Hills. We're still looking at the warrants, the necessity at, at Franklin. So that is still under consideration at this time. But there will be a lot of improvements done at that intersection, as well as dealing with some sight distance issues.
And are we, we're kind of leveling that road out a little bit at that intersection?
Yeah, there'll be some work done there, as well as the, the low spot in the road that's just north of that intersection.
I know that's a very dangerous intersection. I want people to understand we're addressing that issue through this bond issue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Any comments from the public? Final comments from the council. Motion on the floors to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Item 21 is an ordinance granting historic district designation on both the east and west sides of College Avenue between Sim Street on the north and Boyd Street on the south. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on the second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there a representative, a representative of the applicant to make the decision?
Scott Moses, 430 College Avenue. And I hope it will be done before 11 o'clock tonight.
I, I think we will.
I have lived in my 101-year-old house for 19 years. And I'm here as a representative of all of the people that live on, property owners that live on College Avenue. Many others would like for our street to be added to the Chautauqua Historic District. This would be the first expansion of the district since it was formed in 1995. And I'd like to thank Anna Eastar for her assistance during the process and her dedicated work as our city's Historic Preservation Officer. The Historic District Commission has unanimously approved this zoning change. And the Planning Commission also has recommended approval. As you can see, the 400 block of College in the green outlined area, lies between Boyd and Sims, has 43 parcels, all but one are zoned R1. It is a mixture of single-family homes and student housing. Let me see if I can get this right. Nope. Okay. The 400 block of College Avenue was platted in 1909 and 1915. Think about the city map of Norman in 1915. Norman had fewer than 5,000 residents when these homes were built from old-growth timber on the edge of what was a very compact and walkable small town. Phone numbers had only three digits. And there's a little bit more history on there. This is a map prepared by the Sanborn Insurance Company in 1918. Shows just over 50% of the houses that are on College were completed by that point. There are 22 out of the 43 parcels in existence. The map's north is to your, to your right. So Chautauqua is to the top of the outlined area. The housing boom occurred between 1918 and 1925. And when the map was updated in 1925, construction was largely complete. We have 36 out of 43 parcels, or 84% are complete by 1925. Going back to the first map, the homes in the center portion of College on the west side and the east side of Chautauqua were built at the same time by the same builders. M.A. Floyd and John H. Javoss. To the immediate west of Chautauqua, there wasn't much but grass and scrub. And if you notice, the two houses at the very top, right under the 1918 that are on Chautauqua, I have some pictures that I can show you of those houses as they were being marketed by a mortgage company in Oklahoma City, Aurelia Swanson. And this was a book of plans they put together. And in that book, they have a photo of the actual house after it had been built. So this is kind of funny. It shows the plans for the house in there as well. And this is 515 Chautauqua, which happens to be very, very similar to my house. It was built by the same builder at about the same time. So College Avenue today, as a result of its location close to OU, and its age, it's home to a very diverse collection of people. I think we are one of the most economically diverse streets in Norman. We have a mixture of families and singles, students and retirees, a high-net-worth executive, a low-income worker that lives paycheck to paycheck. Students are an integral part of this neighborhood. They have been since the very first houses were built. They will be part of the neighborhood for as long as OU is next door to College Avenue. And both professors and their students live on College Avenue. And we enjoy the students. They keep us young. Of the 43 properties on the block, 78% are contributing structures. It is remarkable that I can stand here before you and say that today, that this block of College has survived 100 years without any protection in an area that tends to get a lot of attention from developers and still has 78% of its structures that are historically contributing. They remain in very good to excellent condition after 100 years of occupancy. The quality of home maintenance has improved over the last quarter century. During that time, we have seen people moving back into what was a unfashionable neighborhood and is now a great place. I mentioned that 78% are contributing structures. However, as recently as 2004, 91% were contributing structures. We've lost, in that 14-year period, four structures due to demolition and one due to alterations. Demolitions also result in the removal of mature trees, such as a massive and healthy, nearly-century-old Schumard oak with a very tall, straight trunk and a very high crown that everybody that walked down College loved that tree. And it was taken down to build a house that's 50% larger than anything else on the street. We are fortunate to have this opportunity to protect this street. It's an opportunity that could have easily been lost during previous decades. I want to call your attention to the following, that all of the 21 property owners who live on College Avenue full-time are in support of this request. 100%. And that's not a number that's easy to get a group of anybody to agree on everything or to agree completely. Why is that? People tend to live in these homes for many decades, 40 years or more. I may live in my home for 60 years if I live long enough. It's not hard to sell a house on College Avenue and move somewhere else and into something lower maintenance if, if you want to do that. We stay because we like it there. It's, we love living in a historic area that's built on a human scale, that's walkable. We're a short walk from the best of everything in Norman. We're a block from campus. We're within earshot. When a touchdown is scored at Owen Field, Midway Market is up the street. Downtown is nearby, Campus Corner, Sprouts. It's just a really fun place to live. And we have a tree canopy that keeps us cool when we walk down the sidewalk on these hot days. And the people that walk down those sidewalks on a rainy afternoon appreciate those trees as well. However, over the last several years, tear downs in the area around campus have accelerated. We have two homes on this block of College that will go up for sale in the near future. One is already up for sale and may have already been sold. I'm not sure. We all hope they will be bought by a loving owner that will take care of them and admire their history. More likely than not, they will be torn down. And Midwest Wrecking will arrive at 7:30 a.m. without notice. Old-growth floors made from century-old wood will be taken to the dump. By 4 p.m., the lot will be scraped clean of every living thing. And we will have nothing but a large scar on the street. And the house that is built will be a misfit. It will lack the patina of age. It may be architecturally inappropriate. It will probably be oversized. So those of us that support this zoning change want to have confidence that the historic character of our neighborhood will be preserved. That is our motivation. That is why all of the full-time residents on College support this request. We want to have confidence that the historic character of our neighborhood will be preserved. The issue of property rights is often raised in this room. Those of us who own houses on College do not just buy a house without any concern about the neighborhood around it. We bought a house, but we also bought into a neighborhood. And so the citizens look to zoning to create a balance between individual control and neighborhood values. The historic district zoning overlay attempts to strike such a balance. Residents in the historic district incur some loss of control, but they gain protection from inappropriate or destructive actions. For rental property owners, one could assume they generally view these properties as investments. The impact of historic district designation on property values is therefore an important question. And a number of scholarly articles have studied the effect of historic district designation on property values. They find that typically, this increases residential property values by between 5 and 35% per decade compared to the values in similar, undesigned neighborhoods. To conclude, as a society matures, it places greater value on its heritage buildings, and it begins to protect them. When early explorers first saw the Grand Canyon, they dismissed it as worthless. No gold or other treasure was there. Likewise, for many decades, we have not protected our unique historic neighborhoods. It seems we are now reaching the point where we do see the value in preserving those areas that still remain. Copper miners protested the protection of the Grand Canyon. There will always be copper miners in our midst who see only the profits of development and not the beauty. And many such copper miners have prospected in core Norman in recent years. The historic areas in Norman need protection. It is our hope that the council members will look favorably upon our request to join the Chautauqua Historic District. I thank you for your time and your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for all the historical information. That was great.
It was fun.
Really appreciated that. Councilmember Hickman?
Scott, first of all, I want to say thank you to you and all the neighbors that are here for all the hard work that you guys have had to go through and have done to make this happen. I know for some people that maybe don't understand the process, it takes a lot of shoe leather, walking doors, knocking doors, talking to your neighbors, getting them to sign on and support it. And so, and it costs you money. And I appreciate very much the hard work that you and the other neighbors have put into making this happen. I just want to make it very clear that I am beyond excited, not only with what we've done previously with South Ridge Neighborhood, expansion of the South Ridge Neighborhood, our first new historic neighborhood in over a quarter century, and now adding College Street to Chautauqua. I think it's an exciting, wonderful time in Norman. Unfortunate that it led to, it was, impetus was because of some of the things that had happened in the area, like the tear downs. But this action, I believe, I fully support. And I believe will help preserve and protect College Street. I tell people, friends that come to visit, come over to Games, that if you want a street, one street that in a lot of ways reflects what it's like to live in central Norman around the university, see the mix of the people, like you said, whether socio-economically, age-wise, or students or retirees, go down, walk down College Street. You know, you've got Midway on the north and the library on the, on the south end. It's a really wonderful, beautiful street with incredible trees. And I'm very excited that you guys are doing this and adding, being added to the Chautauqua District. I think I'm the only council member left up here now that served on the Historic District Commission. And you're absolutely right that through those guidelines regarding scale and character of what can be built, as well as the tree plan that's required by the Historic District Commission to help preserve and protect trees, I think that will be the kind of thing that will help provide protection for College Street, not only now, but into the decades to come. And so I fully support this and am very excited about it. And I want to thank you guys very much for all your hard work. Thank you.
Other council comments? At this time, we will take public comments. Any comments from the public about this item?
You can go. You want to? I'm right here. I can get up easily. Okay. Okay. So my name's Evan Dunn. I live at 1014 Missouri Street usually, until I moved to 1400 Garfield. 100 years ago, when these homes were built, our community was surrounded by farmland. It was surrounded by pasture. And although I appreciate the aesthetics and the nostalgia for that time period, and I appreciate the canopy, however, trees don't live forever. Schumard oaks last about 125, maybe 150 years. So that 100-year-old Schumard oak that was removed, it was going to happen eventually anyways. It's actually good that it was brought down in a controlled fashion, then allowing to decay and to put at risk people's assets, their homes. If I were on in your all's position, I would probably approve this. But we have to acknowledge that the reason our sensibilities and our nostalgia for these types of homes is because suburbia is just so pervasive and it's so, it's so vile. It was a great idea at the time, but it's just vile. So I'd approve it, I guess.
Thank you.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Lee Hall. I live at 648 South Oklahoma. I'm currently serving as the President of the Chautauqua Historic District Neighborhood Association. And we have enjoyed 23 years of continuity of being an active neighborhood association. In 1988 and 2004, there were two different surveys done of the general Chautauqua area in core Norman. And all the homes were inventoried over a 34- in core Norman, and all the homes were inventoried over a 34-block area. And many of those homes, and a very high percentage of those homes, were considered contributing structures at the time. When we first were interested in becoming a historic district, due to a variety of factors, only 10 blocks out of those 34 ended up being protected by an historic district overlay. So there are still a vast majority of blocks in core Norman that have a high percentage of contributing structures that do not have the benefit of our Chautauqua Historic District. Also, in a study that was done in 1988 by Tom Seland, he stated at the time that a historic district overlay is a critical tool in historic preservation. Also, in that inventory in 1988, followed by this report by Mr. Seland, seven of the contributing structures in the 400-block of College were also further identified as architecturally significant structures in Norman, including the first Tudor Revival House that was built in Norman, can be found on the 400-block of College. Our Chautauqua Historic District Neighborhood Association bylaws already allows for the expansion of our neighborhood association if we ever get the opportunity to expand our historic district boundaries. So we're very excited to be able to welcome some new neighbors into our neighborhood association, depending upon your vote tonight. And I'd finally like to say, as president of the Chautauqua Historic District Neighborhood Association, that I not only speak for myself, but for my neighbors and our active members by offering our full support for expanding our historic district. And as Scott mentioned, this is the first time that this has occurred since we were established in 1995. I'd also like to take this time to thank Anie Star in her role as our historic preservation officer. She is a fountain of knowledge when it comes to historic preservation, and she is always willing to offer her support to all of us in a variety of ways, and we really appreciate all of the efforts and advice that she offered to all of us as we were working on this petition. So, thank you. And thank you to the council members. I hope we can get your support.
Hello, I'm John McGahey. I live at 475 College. I've been there for about 10 years now, and I live in a house that's about 89 years old. We just freshly renovated it. And one of our concerns right now is we have a renter property right next door to us and has this really magnificent sycamore tree. It's about 100 years old or so. And so one of my concerns is that someone's going to take this property and take out that sycamore. And with, I have your permission, I have some documents that you can take a look at, just to show you what I'm talking about. You can see our house. So yeah, I'm one of those 100% people that approve. But we have a picture of one of our kids with his arms stretched out showing you how large his trunk is. And one thing that I really like about this neighborhood is the magnificent tree canopy that we have, like they were talking about, obvious benefits to that. I'm all for taking out trees if they look like they're getting ready to fall down, but not for, you know, not just because it's going to help with monetary gain. Anyways, that was my five bits. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marsha McDaris, 448 College. I have been telling people that I had to go to a council meeting tonight to discuss this issue, and they are all shocked that we on College Street are not already part of a historic district. So I want to really thank you all for considering this. And I think with 78% of our homes being contributing structures and 60% of the residents approving this, that the numbers speak for themselves, and now is the time for you all to support us and give us and our city what it deserves in saving these old homes.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us out this evening. My name is Loretta Bass. I live on College Avenue with my husband and two sons, Gus and Elliot, who have grown up on the block, so we've been there 19 years. So, I mean, I don't want to repeat stuff, but I mean, it's just a great block. You know, we have block parties, and you see like faculty and students and families and people of, you know, every stripe and color just coming together and connecting as a community. So we're a bridge street historically that connected the downtown railroad station to the university. Students would stream down university and college and head toward campus, and before there were dorms and before students had cars, they would seek housing, a home on College Avenue with a family. So we have that tradition, we have that history, you still see it in our architecture. I have rose bushes and I have trees that date, you know, to that time, so we're embedded. We're 30% students, we're a lively block, and we like it that way. So, but there is a threat, okay? And I just want to relay this to you as a citizen who's experienced it. We're here tonight because we've witnessed and we've experienced, seen several, over the last several years, we've seen hundreds of years of history destroyed in terms of these bungalows and historic structures taken from the core of Norman. We came to you, College Avenue, two years ago, and we ask you for R1 protection because we were informed by the urban planners of the city that this would help protect us. But I can tell you this evening that it has not, and so that's why we're back. Across from me, about six months ago, a house was on the market less than a week, and it was a 100-year-old bungalow, the same age as Scott's, and it was sold. The lot was so expensive that, I mean, the lot was probably more expensive than the house itself. So they came in, and on the first day, they took out this beautiful 100-year-old structure, and then on day two, they came back for the trees. And so by the end of the second day, and I would say that it took longer to take the tree out in the middle of the lot than it did the house, because that tree was a part of this neighborhood too, and we all appreciate it. So that structure was purchased by an out-of-city investor, and within a week, you can follow the legal documents, it was sold to an out-of-state investor in the state of Colorado. And so my point here is that for these investors, it's just money, and no regard for us as a community. Then across from me is this reality. It's a structure that is larger than any other structure on my block when it will be finished. It will be the largest structure in terms of square footage on College Avenue in the 400-block. It changes the whole block. Our hope is that, you know, maybe we'll get nice neighbors to move in there, but what was there is gone. My neighbor friend Steve, who lives catty-corner from me, he is the oldest residing human on College Avenue in the 400-block. He's a retiree, and we affectionately call him Steve the Mayor. But Steve now looks out his window, and he used to see the sky and leaves from trees, and now he sees a wall because it is so much larger. It includes the light now for that side of the house. So that's what it is on a firsthand basis, and I just want to bring that and amplify the concern. So more and more Norman homes are being purchased by out-of-town and out-of-state entities and then sold for investment purposes. The investment firms have no concern for our history, our community today, or our future. Other cities are enacting measures to protect their structures, their architecture, their communities, their futures. And I hope that the council can use this as a point of reflection as well, that we can do the same. We can protect our future, we can think forward, not back. I hope you will support us tonight, the residents of College Avenue, with a vote of yes for historic designation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make this short because I don't have anything really to add, but I'm Valerie Moore, and I live at 452 College. And pretty much they've said everything. I just want to thank you for listening. We raised a daughter, three granddaughters, numerous cats and dogs, and we've been there since '92. So we know everybody on the block. People have come and gone, and it has continued to keep the character of a real neighborhood, which is what we really love about it. And it's the architecture, the trees, the sidewalks, you know, the closeness to the university. So I hope you will really consider this and help us protect this gem of Norman, just one of many. Anyway, thank you very much.
I am Elliot Metz, and I live on 440 College Avenue. And one thing that I learned from school was they always repeat, "Stay classy." And that's what our homeowners and our renters do. But these out-of-state people, they don't do that. They don't stay classy. They just tear down 100-year-old lots, 100-year-old homes, and turn them into empty lots so they can put up a cheaply-made rental house that houses six to eight college students. This block has rentals, homeowners, but they have class. Like Marsha, she would never tear down one of these houses and put up one of these places. Thank you.
My name is Leah Kenton McGahey. I live at 475 College Avenue, and I actually grew up in that house. When my parents purchased 475 College in 1981, they were the only family on the block. Everything else was either occupied by older couples with no children or predominantly college student rentals. And when they initially bought the house at 475 College, the bank was very leery about lending them the money because it was a very shaded-looking neighborhood. It was in not-great condition, and there was serious concern of whether or not the university was going to expand north or expand south. Having grown up on College, I've had the privilege of watching the street change, and more families have moved back. My spouse and I are now living there with our own kid, a very cute four-year-old. We have family block parties. I get to see kids running around on their bikes, and it's a lot of fun. It's a wonderful neighborhood. We have trees, we have squirrels, we have hawks living in the tree canopies. It's wonderful. Over the years, I have seen some of the older houses that were in not-great condition being lovingly restored, and have now been inhabited by very long-term residents. I used to babysit some of their kids, and their kids now have kids, and their families still live in those houses. I have also seen some of the smaller, very old houses that weren't original to the street, they were, you know, built in the 60s or 70s, get burned down and then replaced with large family structures that are single-family structures. And there was no destruction of trees. But a few years ago, the 1930s bungalow that is immediately south of me was sold, and it had two very large hackberry trees in front of it that were probably a good 100 years old each. One of those trees was very sick, but the other one was healthy. The house previously was a fairly small square footage, had a large backyard, and the developer came in and they put in, admittedly, it's a nice house, but the first thing they did was they cut down both hackberries, and they had pretty much paved the entire backyard in concrete, so now we have water runoff. We were hoping when we zoned down to our Family One that it would cut down on the developers coming in, but we were looking at the floor plans for that house, and it was a five-bedroom, five-bath house. And we were very concerned, because that does not sound like a single-family home. Immediately to the north of me is another bungalow, and once again, it has a decent-sized lot, and it has a huge, probably 100-year-old sycamore tree in front of it. If a developer buys that property, I can pretty much guarantee the first thing they're going to do is cut down that tree, which is huge, and then pave the yard. I have a lot of grass in my yard, so I can candle the runoff. But it's not fair to the street, it's not fair to the water system, to have green grass paved over with massive amounts of concrete. It's also heartbreaking as a person who's grown up on this street, seeing these beautiful old houses, most recently Katie Olmstead's house, which is a beautiful yellow house that had probably a 100-year-old oak tree next to it, torn down and replaced with a major structure. It breaks my heart. We wanted to go R1 to keep it as a family street. I don't personally have a problem with the college students. There are some very lovely students. I do have a problem with the developers coming in and tearing down the old houses and replacing them with major structures that maximize the amount of concrete and cut the trees. Thank you.
I'll try not to be emotional. Mitch Faroff, 421 Park Drive, Mayor, council folks. I provided this very short letter to Planning when we went through the process a few weeks back. I am in full support of adding the 400-block of College Avenue to the Chautauqua Historic District. My property where I live, which is 421 Park Drive, is just outside the notification area of 300 feet, but I do have some rental property in the Chautauqua District. I have lived through the heavy pressures of change throughout our neighborhood, and now realize additional layers of protection are needed. The development of pressure of change has affected the character of my neighborhood. I support additional layers of protection for our special neighborhoods. It seems to me that a historic district designation or architectural review commission are two ways to do this. Like I said, please mark me down for support for this action.
Thank you. Any new comments from the audience? Okay, final comments from the council. I want to thank everybody that came here to express their feelings about the neighborhood. I know that these are really emotional issues, they're very personal issues. I feel very proud that this council, over the last two years, has approved a number of efforts for new historic areas, for downzoning, and so I'm very proud to be able to support another, the expansion of the Chautauqua Historic District tonight. So at this time, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Pose, same sign. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your... Congratulations.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Citizens to address the council as a whole. Remarks should be directed to the whole council and limited to five minutes. Remarks should be directed to the whole council and limited to five minutes.
Okay. Been a while since I've been down here. I was gonna take the opportunity to...
Would you introduce yourself, Bobby?
See, I told you it'd been a long time since I've been down here. Bobby Stevens, Ward 5, 3801 Southeast 108th Avenue. I'd like to take out some time to thank Norman PD. The other night, I broke down on the side of the road, and they were kind enough to stop and help make sure that I made home all right and everything. That was really nice of them. And Officer Evans, he's been to my rescue several times. I really appreciate him. Like I said, it's been a long time since I've been in front of city council. There's a lot of new faces sitting up there. The fire department, back in the fall, we had like 70 mile an hour winds, and I mean, right before everything greened up, and out east, it's really quite the fire danger sometimes. And my neighbor came up to the house, and he was hollering, "Help!", and it was a big fire that got out. And they had, I believe, a tanker and three brush trucks and two other rigs there, like within five minutes. I'd never seen that like it. It was great response time. I was highly impressed with that. And on that note, I was wondering, you know, I've been reading a little bit about OU and CART, never wanting some money from the city or something to kick in some funds. I was wondering, maybe we could figure out how much they donate to the fire department? Maybe that might be a little offset there, since I believe the only money they donate is during on a game day for some EMTs, so that might, you know, be a bargaining tool. I came down to wish Steve a farewell, and I heard that you was gonna be leaving us. You don't want to reconsider maybe $150,000 donated to the Senior Citizens Center, do you? I'm sure they'd appreciate that. Well, that's about all I had to say tonight, and I'm glad to see that council's doing good. I'm hearing good things, and I'm seeing good things out east. We have a road that's closed down, it's 120th, and we got a South of Lake Thunderbird there, and it's been closed for quite a while, and they're using the road that I live on, which is 108th Avenue, which is not striped, and it's a million-dollar-a-mile road. And them cars fly over that hill that I live at, and I've almost been hit several times there. If we could maybe get somebody to patrol out there a little bit more, I'd sure appreciate it. Y'all have a good night. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Cynthia Rogers, 633 Reed Avenue. I miss the earlier fund in terms of the withdrawal of the University North Park PUD, but I was inspired by my shirt, which says, "Think responsibly." It also says, "The Economist," but that's not me, that's the journal. And so what I wanted to bring up was the fact that we still need to think about the status of University North Park Number Two. And it seems that the grand bargain more or less gave up on the cultural center, and it's pretty clear that we won't need to pay the incentives for the Lifestyle Center since that was more or less given up on two, which leads me to think that we should think about, thinking responsibly, about not collecting money into a fund that won't be needed for the authorized expenditures of the project plan. I think that leads us down a road of having some money in a fund that we think we need to spend and find a way to spend it when we know that we have some items of pressing need right now in the budget, and maybe more pressing needs like CART service. So I'm going to encourage you to proceed to think about how we should handle the continuation or the, actually what I want to, how we exit from the University North Park II project in a way that sets us up to fix the budget and also address some of the funding needs that we have immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. I want to make a comment on the sort of ongoing negotiations with the University of Oklahoma about the Cleveland area rapid transit system. And I hope that whoever is handling those negotiations for the city side will push OU for the relevant evidence. They seem to think that OU is somehow subsidizing non-student riders in CART, and when you actually look at the data, that isn't obvious at all. I mean, just sort of the raw, you know, easy back-of-the-napkin calculation suggests that the city is already paying its fair share. So I hope that when the city engages in those negotiations, they will push for the data that they need to see what constitutes the fair share, especially given, if I understand it correctly, it's the partnership with the city that provides OU with the opportunity to access some federal funding. And it's also the case that I know for a fact that the student and faculty access to the bus is subsidized, so I hope that the City of Norman gets credit for all of the fares that non-students pay as well. And I think once you take all that data into consideration, we're probably paying our fair share. I mean, we should pay our fair share. I think that's exactly what should happen. But I would hope that we go back to the data rather than just look at the demand that's being made, because we've seen that the University of Oklahoma hasn't always been the best at calculating that sort of stuff recently. So I hope we do our homework before we engage in those negotiations. Thank you.
My name's Leah Kenton. As a resident of College Avenue, on behalf of myself and many of my neighbors, we would like to thank you very much for helping us preserve our neighborhood. So thank you.
No idea what I'm gonna say. My name is Evan again, 1400 Garfield Avenue. Let's see, how do I set this all up? So typically, this is open mic. Is there anything that you all want me to talk about specifically?
Mosquitoes.
Nothing? Say it again?
Mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes. Okay, I do have some relevant things to talk about regarding mosquitoes. I'm trying a unique approach to managing home invertebrates. And what I'm doing at this house is I'm allowing the grass diversity. People call it weeds, but in actuality, there is a great amount of biological diversity in the typical yard. And I've heard a number of people in kind of the social media circles complain about mosquitoes, and they're serious. And it has demanded a number of approaches to mosquito control with herbicides and pesticides. However, from my experience, if you allow for a dynamic ecosystem that's diverse to grow, you don't have the standing water, you don't have these places within the home environment for mosquitoes to lay their eggs in the standing water, et cetera. Anything else? Kind of ask Evan anything. Fruit trees, okay. Fruit trees are definitely a part of that whole program. Should I maybe play a song and talk about fruit trees? Is anybody for a song?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe quit. Hopefully, this thing is tuned. About what? I don't even know who's playing. Robert says that it's my problem, 'cause I don't know who's playing, couldn't back. Maybe it's his problem, 'cause he puts too much time into spectacle. I love Oklahoma football as much as anyone else, but there's a point at which it becomes something that just takes your wealth. So why don't you save some money? Save some money and save some time. Plant a fruit tree. Make somebody who's yet to come have something to survive. Oh! All right, thank you, thank you. I haven't done that since I played for the Urban Chicken Ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Been a while. We appreciate it.
Robert Husky, 3615 Chatham Court, Ward Three. I couldn't pass this up. Do you realize, of course, it's the female mosquitoes who lay the eggs in the water areas? Now, we don't have to worry about them breastfeeding, but we do have to understand that until they're gorged with blood, they're not going to lay eggs. So I suggest that you make sure that your skin isn't exposed when you're outside where the mosquitoes are. It turns out, they really do have to be gorged with blood. This was demonstrated back in 1939 by Dietrich Bodenstein, who gave, he tried to get mosquitoes to gorge themselves by drinking things other than blood, because he wanted to know, is it gorging? Is it the stuff that's in blood, the kind of particle stuff, the cells? It turned out that they were very good at sucking around the stuff that was in there. He put in plaster pears, he put in little grains of salt and things like that. So he finally decided if he was gonna gorge them, they have three stomachs, he was going to have to give them an enema. And so he did. And it turned out, yes, it was one of the particular stomachs that had to be gorged with blood. He did it from the rear.
I don't... I'm sorry. You don't get a second chance. Okay. All right. This brings us to council comments. I do want to tell everybody, there is a fairly significant storm coming this way, and so I would suggest if you have comments, be brief. I'm going to cut my comments in half, so... Councilmember Scott.
Again, very difficult to follow your song, the mosquito story. I love history, I love trees, I love architecture, so I'm very pleased with this evening. That's it, that's all I got. Be safe.
Thank you, Evan. Trying to convince Mike Costi to come and do a song as well at some point. He's expressed interest. Second, part of the Chautauqua Historic Neighborhood is in Ward Seven, and I live on College Street myself, but I live south of Lindsay Street in a house that's about 100 years old as well. So I would love to see some of the parts of College Street that are in Ward Seven that abut the Chautauqua Historic District, try to join that in the future as well. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you all for coming and watching at home.
All right. It is back-to-school season in Norman, Oklahoma. Don't focus on the traffic, or nowhere to park on campus corner, or getting stuck behind a bus, or a speeding ticket in a school zone. Don't focus on that. Focus on the amazing educational opportunities we provide in our community. Everything from top-notch Norman public schools, to the University of Oklahoma, to the Moore Norman Technology Center. I am grateful for the education we have here, but do be mindful of children crossing the street, cyclists, pedestrians, you're gonna see a lot of them. And if you don't know the rules, which a lot of drivers don't, about cyclists on the road, three feet, okay? Three feet, gotta stay away from them, all right? They have a right to the road as well. So I'm hoping the police department chief could do some posts about, that we could share around on Ward pages of how to drive where there are cyclists around, because I just don't think people really know about it. Thank you again to Councilmember Bierman for authoring and putting up with our many edits, and I'm very happy with the final product, and this is a great step again for becoming a more family-friendly, inclusive community. Thank you.
120th, finish at 108th, stripe at Bats, for mosquitoes, healthy ecosystems. And thank you to my colleagues for being rock stars. 30 years ago, when my baby was little, there was a bathroom and embarrassment, and I've watched Councilmember Bierman be a rock star through all this, and I'm just totally impressed with her, and I know that my other colleague here to my left has had the same experiences, and they're doing great things for our community, so thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. I want to thank especially the residents from College Street and the area that came out and all your hard work. I'm really excited that we got this approved tonight, and pleased that hopefully the generations to come will see College Street as it is today and not get changed and destroyed as we've seen other parts of central Norman. I do want to take this opportunity, prerogative, I guess, to say happy birthday to my youngest daughter. She will turn 18 this Saturday, August 18th, and so happy birthday, Emma, if you're awake. I love you. I also want to say on August 23rd, I'm the Chair of the Community Planning and Transportation Committee. We meet at 4:00. We have several wonderful topics coming up. One's gonna be discuss public transportation. We always have a presentation from CART. We also will be talking about vegetation management issues, as well as the implementation of the medical marijuana state question that was passed, and how it affects our existing city ordinances, as well as beginning the discussion, and it's a very important discussion, about the upcoming transportation bond. That will be the continuation of the bond that we have currently from the 2012 Bond Project, and this will be, set us on a path forward for the next five to 10 years for the major road projects that we will be funding and working on in our community. So it's a very important discussion, one we don't have all the time, because we only do these bonds every five or six years. And so I do encourage everybody who is interested in that topic or has comments to please reach out to Sean O'Leary or his staff, or to me, or other council members, because it will be a very important and timely discussion. Also want to announce that on August 25th, we are having a shelter open house. A group of us are hosting an event at the Norman Animal Welfare Center, and the volunteers are gonna be out giving tours. There'll be some light refreshments. You helped to build the new Animal Welfare Center. If you haven't been out, please come out and take a look at it. It's a beautiful facility, and the chief and the police department did a great job in running it, and it'd be an opportunity for you to come out and also take home a forever friend. So I encourage all of you, it's from 11 to 2:00, to come out to the Animal Welfare Center. I also want to tell you that on August 25th, there are a couple other ongoing events. One is the, I believe it's the first annual, or maybe it's a renewal, of the Norman Pride Festival is gonna be in Gray Street Parking Lot in downtown Norman from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then also on the 25th, one of my favorite events we have in central Norman is the Norman Porch Fest. And so in the Miller Historic District, you get a chance to walk around that beautiful neighborhood with your beautiful trees, starting at McMichael Music there on Alameda, and enjoy live music. and enjoy live music on the porch in front of these historic homes. And that is the evening of the 25th from 6 to 10 p.m. And so you have a full day on August 25th of all kinds of wonderful events that you can support our community. And then finally, on the 26th, is the Norman Pride Parade. And my understanding, from what I've been told, is that this is the first pride parade that the city, that will be in the city of Norman. That is at 7 p.m. There are pre-parade festivities at the Old Lumber Yard, the Tolee Park now on Main Street, beginning at 4 p.m. And so if you'd like to come out and support Norman Pride and the festival and the parade, please put that on your calendar for the August 25th and 26th. Thank you. Two quick things. Council Boarding Associates has had a breast-friendly environment since 2000. We've had our own special room there, so I'm glad everybody else is joining us. And on the Thursday Finance Committee meeting, I'm glad Dr. Rogers read our agenda. We are talking about the recruitment district on the North Park, University North Park, and ways to help with the budget. So that'll be this Thursday at 8:30. We're gonna address these issues. So hopefully see you guys then.
Councilmember Bierman.
So once again, I just want to say how pleased I am that we are recognizing August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Three weeks ago, I had to pump in the bathroom at the airport because the only lactation room was three terminals away and I had a 45-minute layover. So I got to pump in the handicap bathroom and three times someone jiggled the handle and my worst fear was that the person on the other side of the door was in a wheelchair and needed that bathroom. So a couple things. I also want to say how excited I am for the community open house at the Animal Welfare Center. I am going to be replacing Councilmember Hickman as the council liaison on that committee. I've been working on animal shelter issues for several years and I'm looking forward to sitting on the other side of the table again after serving on that committee. So I kind of feel like I'm coming full circle on that one. And I'm gonna wrap it up because I know that storm is barreling down on us. The Oklahoma Wild and Scenic Film Festival is going on Saturday, the 18th, from 11 a.m. to 9 p.m. at the Mercury. I love seeing the increase in film festivals in this community. We are the city of festivals and we now have two running film festivals in this community. And I'm really looking forward to being a part of that. So on that note, take it away, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, just given the text I'm receiving from the fire chief, I'll just go ahead and pass tonight and I'll just provide my information to the council tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I am going to cut down on what I was going to say, but I do want to address one issue. We will be losing our city manager in a couple of months. And I want to make it clear that personally, I am very sad to see him leaving. As a mayor, he has been amazing to work with. He could not have given me any more time and attention and information. We have, I think, one of the best staffs in this, I know, whole state, in this whole region. And the reason we get so much done is because they are so professional and they are so hardworking. And part of that is a result of all the great leadership we have, starting with Mr. Lewis and down through our departments and to everyone that works on our streets. So I just wanted to say that. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.